Follow me in order. Our first item on the agenda is sort of a bittersweet moment tonight. We're having a city clerk retire who has been here for 13 years and this will be her last meeting with us. So Paulette, if you will join me at the front.
It's getting a little giddy.
In appreciation, this certificate appreciates is presented to E. Paulette Bowers, who on January 1st, 2020, will retire from employment with the City of Albemarle after 13.83 years of loyal and faithful service. On behalf of the citizens of Albemarle, the mayor and the city council have authorized this certificate and extend best wishes for a well-earned rest and a long and happy life. Paulette, thank you for all you've done for us. We're going to miss you, so you can come back to meetings.
I just wanted to quickly thank Mayor Michael and the existing council members, as well as the eight other council members that I have worked with in the past, of which four have passed away, and previous mayor Whit Whitley that I worked with. Also, city manager Raymond Allen hired me and I worked with him until he retired, and current city manager Michael J. Ferris I have worked with since 2006, since I came. So, thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Paulette.
And any other council member like to make comments?
I just want to add that it's going to be, it's going to be different. You know, coming into, no, it's just, you know, you spend as much time, as much more time at work than you do with your own family, and you're coming in every day, seeing Paulette, and there certainly, I know when she announced her retirement, covered quite a few things that I could really count on and rely on Paulette for, and so, going to miss her. And I appreciate everything she has done for the city and for me personally as well.
I'll just say, Paulette, what are you going to do on Monday nights now, on the first and third Monday night of each month?
Sure.
But in our honesty, we will miss you. Thank you for your service.
I'd just like to say, Paulette is a real gem of an employee, and she will get it.
I'd just like to say that if it wasn't for her, and y'all don't clap, I wouldn't be here. I would not have made it through the first year. Paulette, I really appreciate it and thank you so much.
Paulette, I just want to wish you a very, very happy retirement and a lot of first and third Mondays at your leisure. And not a lot of people know this, but Paulette has been my saving grace on many occasions because I come in here like I did tonight, and I always forget this, and so I always say, "Paulette, I'm here." And she would always come through for me, because I guess it was, you always did, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Well, Paulette, you have been that guiding force that we always know, we can count on Paulette to sign these papers, this is what's got to happen. And if you get bored, you know, you can always watch us later on Tuesday and Thursday, or Tuesdays. Good luck.
Good luck to you. Remember, there is no reason to be bored in retirement. I don't understand people who are bored in retirement, I promise you. And, you know, you can wait awake or so before letting Michael know what's bored you want to be on. We have some openings. Oh, thank you so much for watching this.
Yep, thank you.
Consider approval of a November 26th adjourned session, November 26th closed session, December 2nd regular session, and December 2nd closed session minutes.
Move to approve.
Discussion by council member Aldridge, second by council member Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next is public hearing. Consider revised agreement in ordinance 1944 to fund the City of Albemarle and the One North Carolina in city grants to Enforge. Also, we'll remember, this is an agreement we approved previously in 2018. We had to modify it a little bit because the state pays over three years, the city pays over eight years. So it had to have a slight modification, and you also have before you, the 1944, which is a budget amendment to make the first payment. Council, have anyone want to come before? Council, this is a public hearing. Anyone want to speak for or against?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second. Motion by council member Townsend to close the public hearing, second by council member Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement.
Move approval.
Motion by council member Hughes, second by council member Lauder, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to pass ordinance 1944.
So move.
By council member Aldridge.
Second.
Second by council member Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Two agenda adjustments, we need to add a closed session at the end of the meeting, and we also need to move item number 11 up to announce delegations, and we have somebody here for that meeting.
We already had closed session.
We had closed session, real estate and personnel?
It will be, closed session will be for personnel and economic development. Anything else, ma'am?
The real estate.
And real estate.
So we're adding economic development?
Adding economic development, correct.
Motion to approve of agenda adjustments.
Motion by council member Townsend, second by council member Lauder, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. All right, going back to our announced delegations, presentation of fiscal year 1819 city audit. Colleen, who's making that presentation? Okay?
We're pleased to announce that Cassie Wilson from Martin Starnes and Associates will be here to discuss the 1819 audit.
I didn't know I was supposed to load it. Oh, you don't have, do they have this? I didn't know I was supposed to load it.
Do we have it?
I have it.
We have it. This is in the paper. We have it, okay.
The audit itself is, not this, let me run and make some copies of this.
I think we have the whole audit.
We've got the full thing.
Yeah, you got the full audit, but not her presentation.
Okay.
Okay, you want to have a seat then, and we'll come back to you then. Let's move to the item number 11 that we moved up, drainage of the right-of-way agreement with American Fiber and Finishing. Mark, are you taking that one?
Sure.
You want to come forward and introduce it, and then if we have any questions, we have the plant managers for American Fiber and Finishing here with us.
Mayor City Council, I'd like to present to you a drainage right-of-way agreement that the city is proposing to have with American Fiber and Finishing. Recently and historically, that area has flooded, and so there's been a great need to come up with a solution for that problem. And the city manager and the mayor and a whole group of people have looked at that issue and tried to come up with a way to do it. Michael and, this is Phillips.
My name's Shane Phillips, I'm the operations manager at American Fiber and Finishing.
So Shane, we've been working with Shane for some time now to try to come up with a solution. It's actually a very simple solution, and all we have to do is we've got a small piece of land that's at the northeast part of their property, where the trail ends, the trail ends, there's a ditch from just, our property's involved. They just basically have to go in there, clear out a section of that ditch, further down, they're going to clear out another section of the ditch that's going to allow the water to drain, instead of reaching a higher area and going into their plant, it's now going to follow that ditch, and then go down into the existing drainage system, and they go underground, and it will go out to the stream. So, it's a very simple solution, and I'm just glad that we were able to do this. So it's just a, it's just simply a right-of-way agreement to allow them to do that. Once you're approved.
If I can add a little bit to it, what's happening is, this is not doing anything different than what previously took place when the railroad was in service. When the railroad was in service, they would maintain the ditch along the edge of the railroad tracks. Well, they've taken up the tracks, they don't maintain it anymore, that ditch is filled up, so it causes water to jump out of the ditch and then go into the American Fiber and Finishing plant. So what the solution is, just to reestablish what had been there basically probably since that facility was built 100 years ago, to direct the water along the tracks, get past the building itself, and to basically the property line between the Wisconsin Ballfield property we own and American Fiber and Finishing, there's a swale through there, and that's where water has always been directed. But without the railroad there maintaining that, that ditch is filled up, so they're just trying to reestablish the ditch. Part of that means getting on our property just to reestablish it, to allow it to move where it had always been and previously been intended to move.
Had the railroad officially abandoned that rail line?
No, they have not, but we have a written agreement from the railroad where they have stated that we can dig the ditch.
So. Now where it hits our property, we own that.
We can reestablish the ditch.
Okay. Mr. Beaver, you see any problems there?
I haven't, personally, with the railroad, and I've really, probably, been on it several times, and I'm going to get a couple of times.
Further questions, council? I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Motion by council member to approve the agreement, second by council member Lauder, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to unannounced delegations. Laura Harbison, 617 Isaiah Drive. And John Michael Hankman.
Good evening. Oh, yes. I'll go ahead and start, and I'm not going to take that much time. I just wanted to address the council, since there were new issues brought forth to y'all previously, since I've seen you last, and I wanted to just update you on how things were, so I won't take much of your time on that. I have first wanted to ask you to keep in mind that the last time I came with all of the crowd that came with me, we had to debute a lot of false allegations. I had written them down again, just quickly, that we weren't a counseling agency, that they've never seen anybody out there interacting with horses, that the horses had gotten out of the pasture six or more times. This was exaggerated significantly, they did get out three times, and the 911 calls were brought forth to you all, but only three of them were about the horses. The smell of horse poop has affected people from enjoying their yards. The pasture was claimed to be only three-fourths of an acre, and the horses, they said that they needed more space, and with grass eight to 10 inches tall, and that the horses were kept in a metal shed with a low roof, and it gets too hot in there in the summer, yet they were kept in there a lot, and the horses were not well cared for and virtually abused, and the flies disturbing picnics. So these are all claims that were shared with you all before, and we had come with lots of evidence, not just from people that came out from the community, but also letters documenting things I had provided you all in a file before, so I'm not going to go into much detail, other than remind you that those are falsehoods. And I hate to say lies, but it looks more towards that. I had, when I had come the last time, I did not expect to speak, so I was kind of caught off guard. We had done the best that we've been able to do regarding the fence condition, we have now had it measured out. Mr. Kevin had come out about a month ago, three, four weeks ago, to measure out where the new fence line would have to be, and that's going to be tied into our new fence for Stanley Community College's leased property. We have started to speak to people about helping us with donating supplies, gathering materials for this project, which will be completed by January 31st. If we don't have this community college side completely fenced in by then, we'll at least have the part that is now existing fenced in, or hope to tie it all together, but I just wanted to let you know that we are doing everything we can for that. As far as the manure, there was new claims that I had heard about regarding the fact that nobody's been out there scooping manure, and that people have actually been covering it with straw. I'll tell you, if any of you have ever done any farm work, carrying straw and dumping it places is a lot harder work than cleaning up manure, so hopefully you saw the silliness of that. But I just wanted to let you know that that is nowhere near the truth. We have not been able to clean it up every day, we have done our darndest best to do it. We've done it 55 times since September 3rd, when I first learned about the concern, which virtually is about every other day as an average. We've done it every day to start with, but then there's been rain, there's been times when I've been called away, people I've employed had not shown up, I had to let somebody go with that. There was a concern about volunteers that were offered here in the meeting. I did not ask them to volunteer for that. I can't ask them to volunteer for that because they are either past clients or family members of clients, and that's exploitation to ask them to volunteer. So I couldn't stop them in the meeting, however, I have not asked them to volunteer. I have had myself, John Michael, Cooper, over here, I've had Heather, one of my workers, and I've had a volunteer, a little girl from Central Elementary School and her mom, that saw us on the news that has been coming out to help do the manure. We've never covered it with hay or straw. The only thing I can suspect of where that might have even come from, for any pictures, is that when the horses eat out of the feeder, they might have dropped hay on manure, that was pictures, but anything placed down by us has only been on mud after manure has been removed, to help two issues. One, our horse Saffron has navicular disease, which is like arthritis, in her front feet, and that's why she's a rescue horse, and if a horse with navicular steps in deep mud and has to walk in that, it hurts, it irritates it. We also are trying to prevent thrush, which is like a bacteria infection of the horse's hoofs, that when you have muddy conditions, that happens. Our farrier, which is the guy that comes out and cleans the horse's feet every six weeks, recommended hay. Oh, hay, that's funny. The horses don't seem to like this thing of hay that you brought out here, and I said, "No, they don't, it's a lower grade, I didn't realize it, the guy that brought it didn't realize it," and he said, "If I were you, I'd spread this all over the mud, it'll help the navicular issue, it would help as far as, you know, the prevention of thrush, that way it'll actually just fall out the hoofs, you know, if there's clumps of hay." So we go out there, we remove the manure from what's on top of the hay, and then when there's new mud, we do our best to spread more out, but it's hard work. Now, I had met with an attorney when I started noticing that I wasn't able to go by the every day that I had hoped to do, to see what I needed to do legally. And he had reviewed the ordinance with me and made sure that I was ensuring that the stable or the enclosure area where the tin shed is actually removed of manure every day, because that is in the ordinance, but that there's nothing in the ordinance about the manure in the pasture. And I have both the old ordinance and the new ordinance regarding that, but despite the fact that it's not in the ordinance about the pasture having to be cleaned of manure at all, we're still doing our best to do it as regularly as possible, to try to be a good neighbor. And we're going to continue to do that. When we get other property there in Stanley Community College, we're still going to do our best. I just didn't want to be posed as somebody who's being negligent or lying to you all. You all are welcome to come out. I don't remember if any of you, I've not actually been able to give you a tour, but my office manager today, before I left, he's like, "Make sure they know what our office number is, if any of the city council members want to come out, I'll give them a tour, even if you're in session, as long as I'm not in a session with clients out with horses." So feel free to come out, take a look for yourself, we've got nothing to hide, you can look under the hay. But please, you know, just know that we're doing our very best, and I'm not able to do it every day from the pasture right now, but I'm still trying to find more volunteers that have never been clients or family members of clients. But we have a lot of clients, a lot of people that have been connected to clients, and I was actually looking, because there was a comment about how us as a small business, and yes, I live in Albemarle City, but the clients that were here, a lot of them weren't City of Albemarle residents, but I was looking again at my data, and we have more clients that are Albemarle City than there are people in the neighborhood next door to us. Of course, I can't have them come in here and talk to you, because again, that's exploitation. I cannot breach confidentiality, I can't, you know, use their numbers to help me in any way, but I want you to know that we are doing our best to try to keep peace, we recognize the concerns that have been voiced to you, and although we don't agree with them, we want to do what we can to stay and be able to provide the services that we are. And that's all I have. I do have those, some handouts with the old ordinance and the new ordinance, and the pictures actually, just in case you're curious, because I noticed there was pictures that were handed out last time, and I don't know what they were, because I couldn't see on the video, but I have these for each of you, I'll pass out while he's talking. The first one just shows our pasture area, that is the most dirty, the horses hang out right here a lot, so there's a lot of cleanup that has to happen there. This is a picture of mud, in case you aren't, you know, outdoorsy and see what mud looks like, but this was posed as poop. This is poop. So took that picture before I cleaned it up today. So I'm going to pass this out to you, to let you look at, not trying to argue any further, but I am trying to make sure that you know that we are doing our best. Okay? I don't know if you have any questions for me before.
Well, let's let John Michael speak first, and then we'll go from there.
Oh, sure.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Do you want to start over from Ms. Hall?
No, that's fine. We'll catch her up.
They were hoping probably I wasn't going to get here.
Go ahead.
Ready? Okay. Well, first of all, thank you for allowing me to speak, and happy holidays to everybody. Wish it was under better circumstances than this, but here we are. I guess my question, I'll phrase this as a question, sort of, it's going to be a long one, but related to my concern with the process here, I guess I'm still confused about it, and maybe I could be educated here tonight about how this process should work. It's very, very frustrating to us, the way this pattern has played out, and I'll sort of illustrate what the pattern looks like to us. So it goes with Mr. Lambert and some of the others from the neighborhood showing up unannounced with what amounts to false claims. You know, practically everything he has said and brought about to this council has turned out to be either a falsehood, an exaggeration, you know, misinterpretation, I don't know how you want to phrase it, but, so, when this happens, you know, and I watched the video of the last meeting that he was here, which was November 18th, and it gets a lot of sympathy for his claims without validation for those claims, whether they're factually based or not. They seem generally accepted as being fact, without our ability to debunk them until we find out about it later. You know, so after that, you know, November 18th meeting, you know, everything he said shows up on the front page of the snap, he's on the radio, this is damaging, you know, without anybody asking her, asking us, "Well, what do you say about this? Are these claims true, are they false, what are they?" No, it's just in the paper, it's on the radio. You know, I don't know what the legal definition of slander is in the state of North Carolina, but, you know, making false claims in the public to the damage of another person, she's got clients asking her, "What's going on, Ms. Laura, are you mistreating your horses?" Okay, well, that's because of what's being said in the public. And we have, you know, we're getting these things told to us after the fact, and so here we are again, following this pattern of having to come back up here to respond, to defend ourselves. So I guess what my question is, is this going to be the process from here on out? Is this the way it's going to be every time? Who's validating these things for, you know, we're taking sides, is what it seems like? You know, I heard comments like, "It sounds like she's not doing what she's been told to do." This was, this was in the video I watched last night of November 18th meeting, this is a valid concern, that's a cesspool, without asking anybody anything, without coming to the property, without doing what? Who determines the validity of claims before they're spewed out into the public to the detriment of someone's reputation? So please educate me about the process. Is this the process, is this how it will go from now on? Are we going to be coming back up there every two months to have to deal with these claims? I'm sorry if I sound frustrated, but it's very, very frustrating to be put into a negative light negatively and falsely. It is very frustrating.
Well, I would say, we hope not, best I can give, answer I can give tonight, but they have a right to come before council and ask to be heard. The investigation occurs after that.
Okay.
So that's correct, they do have a right to come forward and ask to be heard.
I understand that.
Okay. Mr. Brandt, would you guys?
I just, I just wanted to add to that, that you were critical of their coming at whichever meeting it was, and you say they made claims which were false and so forth, and you didn't have a chance to rebut. I would remind you that we have heard you this evening, and you've made serious claims against them.
Which claims?
And we're listening to you, just like we did them. We have a responsibility to hear every citizen of this city.
Which claims have I made that are serious?
You said they told falsehoods.
Well, they have.
Play it back, play it back.
Yes, I said that, I did.
And they weren't here to rebut that, were they?
How does, how does someone next door know that she's covering poop with hay? It's a falsehood.
We're going to hear you, and we will hear them.
I understand. Do you think it's a problem for someone to make false claims?
That's, that's, you're the one speaking, I'm not on problem.
I'm asking a question, can I ask a question? Is it, is it a problem for someone to make false claims?
How do I know they're false?
How do you know they're true?
I'm hearing, I'll hear you, whatever. I welcome you here to hear you.
You called it a cesspool. You determined it was a cesspool from the pictures he brought you. You assumed it was poop? I assumed? Am I correct?
Wait, you just, how do I know what she said is poop? She just did it.
You don't know either way, so why would you make a declaration that it's a cesspool? If you don't know either way.
How do I know they're false?
How do you know they're true?
I'm, I'm hearing, I'll hear you, whatever. I welcome you here to hear.
You called it a cesspool. You, you determined it was a cesspool from the pictures he brought you. You assumed it was poop? I assumed? Am I correct?
Wait, you just, how do I know what she said is poop? She just did it.
You don't know either way, so why would you make a declaration that it's a cesspool? If you don't know either way, why wouldn't you just say, "Sir, we hear your complaints. You have a right to be here. We'll investigate the matter." Why would you call it a cesspool without any knowledge?
Did we call that then?
Yes.
This board did?
You did. On the video. I don't want to turn this into an antagonistic thing, but I feel like we're being targeted antagonistically by citizens, which have every right to come up here and say anything they want to say. My concern is the process for validating the claims, for allowing it to, to be supported as the way it sounds, and then hits the media without any validation whatsoever to the detriment of someone's reputation.
Are you a lawyer?
No, sir.
Just a friend or something?
A personal friend, yes.
I just wanted...
I'm hopeful that this will be resolved when you get the fence put up. Now, Mr. Beaver, Mr. Beaver offered to do a agreement, and I don't think everybody went, anybody, either side went forward with that agreement. I know Ms. Harbison, I think, talked to him, but no agreement was ever drawn and y'all, y'all did not make any agreement between you, correct?
I don't, I don't recall what agreement you're referring to specifically. I know there were, there were some conversations throughout several, couple of these meetings. I know the initial one where there were so many people here. I know a lot of, there were, there were comments made that we would be more than happy to speak with the neighbors.
I think that's where Mr. Beaver offered to draw an agreement to try to resolve it between both sides, and I think he even offered to draw that agreement for free.
If you speak more to that, I don't know, but...
But I, you know, that did not occur, so we're hearing both sides back and forth now, and all we can do is investigate it after we hear it. Go ahead, Ms. Harbison.
I did contact Mr. Beaver to meet with him about arranging an agreement. However, at that time, he was said, "Wait until we found out about the grandfather piece," because I had contacted him before we heard back from the school of law or wherever it was that you're waiting to hear back from. From that point, it was, seemed to have been resolved as far as that went. So he and I had not met, but I did reach out to him right away and I've actually gone up to, when I've seen the, Mr. Lambert's wife out by the fence with her grandkids, looking at the horses, I've approached, you know, and just been kind and like, "Hey, how are you?" I've talked to the neighbors in the neighborhood to try to see if they had any concerns, and that was twisted around as I was trying to pit neighbor against neighbor, but I was trying to find solutions. But there hasn't been a formal agreement. The agreement that I understood was from what you all said about moving the fence and about us doing the manure every day was what you all asked us to do, and that's why I came today, like, you know, I've been trying to do every day, but I haven't, I honestly have not been able to do every day, but I'm doing it the most I can. But just to remind you that it isn't based on ordinance of why it had to be when it comes to a pasture, just for a stable, and that's been done every day.
I thank you for at least being proactive and trying to maintain the property which you've done and going to extend and move the fence. I hope that that will resolve this issue.
We do too.
And I'm not going to comment on the stable versus the pasture. I'm going to refer that to our planning director and let him find out if we're, if we're correct or incorrect.
Okay.
But I, I just wanted to make a, make another observation. Mr. Hayman stated a minute ago that they, you were basically, it was unannounced, we were having a public hearing. Keep in mind that every time this council is up here, when we have a public hearing, it's published just like in this scenario, just like in every other scenario. So I need, I want to make sure that you and I, we're on the same page, that this wasn't just something, these people showed up five minutes before the meeting to have a public hearing, and we said, "Hey, let's have a public hearing." That's not the case at all. Another thing is, when Ms. Harbison, you, you say these falsehoods. Well, I'm not a, a farmer, never had horses, never been on a horse, but we all know what horses do. And so when you say it's a falsehood that, that there's been an odor in the neighborhood, I don't know how you, how you can, how you can prove that. I mean, that's, that's, that's what horses do.
Right, well, and I, I can't prove odor because that's subjective.
But you said it was a falsehood. That's what you said a minute ago.
It's a falsehood that we are a counseling agency. They said we weren't. It's a falsehood that we've been covering manure with hay and haven't been out there to pick it up.
Again, I, I, but what I'm saying is, you said it was a falsehood, that it was creating an odor.
I said that it was...
That's what you said earlier.
That they had come out originally and said that the smell of horse poop was keeping them from being able to enjoy their pool.
Do you think that's unreasonable?
I do, because, yes.
I have.
You have been to pasture?
I have.
The smell was bad?
Mm-hmm.
You're the first one that said that.
Uh, is, listen, but you see, the problem, the challenge is this.
Okay.
I don't, don't take it personal. They're horses.
I'm not taking it personal.
I would say it if it was anybody else. It's nothing personal against you, and I think unfortunately through this whole, this whole series of events, things have gotten personal.
Well, I don't take it personal against me, but I am seeing that we have, you know, people coming in our office to either, you know, voice like, "Hey, we support you. This is ridiculous. I'm so sorry, I'm rooting for y'all." Or we're having come, people coming in saying, "I don't know if I want to do therapy anymore here because I hear that you guys aren't taking care of your horses." And so it's, it's causing issues. I'm going to different meetings, I'm on different boards, and I've been approached asking about, you know, "Is your horse thing really that bad?" And, you know, and it's just everywhere. So it's something that before, it's something that, like, I guess what he was trying to say too, is that before there's like comments about a side, because it sounded like there was agreement. It really sounded like agreement from the council from, in the last video, of what his claims were, yet we just ask you to come see before you make an agreement towards either one of us, and just to know that we are doing our best. And when it's been raining, there's been like a couple of days in a row that I hadn't been out there. And I will tell you that in the wintertime, there's more rain, there's more mud, there's more poop because I can't get out there as often, and it does smell more. So I've, actually, when I've been out there cleaning, you know, I notice that the wet, muddy poop that I'm cleaning up before I put the straw down, it stinks, but we're disposing of it. We're taking care of it. So, you know, I just, I want to just, we're just trying to say that before, like, a determination is made, before there's stuff put on the radio and the newspaper that's against us with judgment, we would like to have it be investigated.
And, and to your point, I think, I think that was the chief complaint, has been the odor. And you all have referenced Mr. and Ms. Lambert on several occasions, and they're not the only ones that have complained. You've had a whole neighbor, or a majority, I should say, of, of people that have been in this council chamber complaining about, the number one thing is the odor. That's what, that's what's got everybody in, in an uproar.
Well, now, because that's the only thing, but I don't have proof that's not true. Because I've shown proof that everything else that they had come for beforehand was not true.
One of the biggest things that's concerned me is, you're kind of apart and nobody has tried to sit down and talk to each other.
I've tried.
I really, I, well, I ask you to reach out again, instead you can set a meeting with them to sit down and talk about this. I mean, this is basically a neighborhood dispute that the council's only involved in because there is an ordinance, and as you say, you question whether it's stable or is it stable in pasture. I wish you could come together and try to talk about something and come to some agreement.
But not, not, I'm sorry.
Mr. Townsend?
Mayor, considering the sensitivity of this matter, I would hope that council consider this in the future. It seemed, it almost seemed as though when they're here, the other neighbors are not here. When the other neighbors are here, they're not here. I would hope that we as a council, before we hear this matter again, that it be an announced agenda item rather than approving this as an unannounced delegation where one party don't know about this being heard by council, you know? Because it almost seemed like we back and forth with this issue, you know? And at some point, I hope that we could, as a council, can put it to rest, you know? But if not, you know, at some point, we got to call it the end of the day and let, you know, let some, some other matter handle.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't think we're getting nowhere right now.
Anything further from Ms. Harbison or?
Not for me, sir.
I, I mean, I, I guess I was done. I just, I was concerned, I'm concerned about the process, so that's all. I'm sorry if I was, you know, a little bit emotional about it, but it's an emotional subject. It's affected us greatly. You know, I personally have been out there scooping poop many, many times, and I don't want to harp on smell because it's a subjective thing, but I, I literally, when I, when I scoop it, I'm amazed that I can scoop a shovel of horse manure and smell at it, and I don't smell it. It just doesn't smell to me. And so many other people we've brought that are completely clueless about what's happening, and we say, "Hey, what do you smell out here?" And they say, "It's the only thing we're talking about." And it just blows me away, but it's a subjective thing. I realize that. We can argue till we're blue in the face about who smells what. I, we really can. But my opinion, it's just not a nuisance, it's not noxious. You know, one pile of cat poop smells worse than 500 piles of horse poop. You know, it's just, it just is that way to me, but...
John Michael?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you be willing to facilitate a coming together?
I would be willing to do that.
Us not even involved?
I'd be willing to do that. If it kept us from having to come up here.
You'd be good at that.
And Mr. Townsend, we'll never come back here again if they don't come back here again. You know, we, we'd have never come to this place without them, you know what I mean? But I understand what you're saying.
I'm talking about being not with us.
I understand.
What do you think about that?
I'm open-minded to anything to resolve this. I feel like, like, like Laura said, you know, we've documented 55 times, it's more than that, because many of the times that me, her, and Cooper have been out there, we didn't write it down, we just did it. I mean, we were out there Sunday doing it, we didn't write it down, so it's probably more like 75 times. And it's all because we want things to be peaceful. You know, she does incredible work for lots of kids. That's all we want to do. And we want the neighbors to be happy and we want it to be peaceful. I'd do anything. You know, he, Mr. Lambert said, I think at the last meeting, that, you know, he, he just assumed not to talk to her, but I, I understand that's, that's talk, and that maybe he'd be willing to, to meet. I don't know. You know, I'm, I'm not what you would probably consider a, you know, a neutral party in this, so I don't know, I'm not sure how that would go if I moderated that or mediated that.
I don't think you can moderate it, but I think you can reach out to y'all just to sit down and talk.
Absolutely. I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
They may not want to talk, but offer to sit down and talk. I think the only way we're going to settle this is for both of the parties to get together and come to a consensus of what needs to happen.
I, I agree with you, and I, I would hope 100% that grown adults, as we are, all are in this particular situation, can do that. I mean, we're all, we're all residents of the city of Albemarle, we're all just trying to live our lives and be happy and peaceful, so we ought to be able to accomplish that, as simple as it sounds.
Ms. Hall?
First of all, I apologize for being late and sorry that I missed whatever presentation you or Laura did before I got here. I guess so that we're all on the same page, and before I say that, I wish, okay, that anything said right there, people thought about before they said it, because this is a public meeting. And I know sometimes in, I've known you a long time, you've done me a long time, probably have said some things in that 20 years that I probably would have, go back and eat now, okay? But things that are said from the dais or from right there from the public is open. There's no way we can say, "Oh, you can't print that, it's got to be off the record, you can't do that. This is a public meeting." But I think the last thing that was determined, and you all might have already done this when everybody was here, that night that we stayed forever.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm looking at Kevin, and I wish he had my glasses on. The ordinance was approved that night, is that correct, guys? And then, since then, I think with the fence, Laura, you may have asked for an extension of time to get that done. Has that been mentioned tonight?
No, it was brought up at the last...
Has it been mentioned tonight?
I believe so.
Now, she just said that she needed the January 31st. I think we gave you the extension to do it, yes.
Okay.
Right.
So that's still another issue out there, okay? And again, I'm...
Because Kevin came out, it was September 16th, you were given 60 days. Kevin had agreed that night, September 16th, to come out and draw the, the lines. The, I know Kevin's extremely busy.
Yeah.
And so it was very late in that process when Kevin finally came out, it was like a week prior to the 60 days, so they didn't really give us the time to, to accommodate the 60 days, so the January 31st was given, so...
But I think the big issue, and I'm not gonna, I am not fussing about anything, okay? I think the big issue was that night, if I remember correctly, and even from when the last, whenever the Lambert's were here a month ago. I think y'all were gone then, and I didn't know they were coming that night, I mean, it was not...
We didn't either. That's what, that's what...
And it's like Dexter made the comment, again, this is any time, anybody can come anytime to talk about anything.
Absolutely.
Um, it's the reason we don't have a handful of people here and they're all staff, but anybody could be here for any time. But one of those issues that night was, is that all those folks that were saying they would come clean and they would come move and that kind of thing.
We addressed that earlier before you got here.
That's fine, then, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry I was late, sorry I missed that.
And I'll summarize that for you, is that most of those people were not, we didn't even expect them to be here, but were pe, but are people that Laura can exploit to do that.
Understood.
Because of the confidentiality of the practice and things of that nature. You know, it was kind of them to offer that, but we just can't do that.
Gotcha.
So it's on us, basically, to do, so...
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mayor, just one more thing.
You know, of all the, of all the issue, of all the conversations I've had with, with the neighbors over there, and I know multiple people in council have been contacted as well, I can, I can tell you right now that no one has questioned what you do in, at your business over there. No one has put the, the hard work and the, and the impact that you make in people's lives, no one has questioned that at all in any conversation that I've had. The only issue they've had has been the smell. That's it. And, and so I agree with, with some of what the other folks have said up here tonight that, you know, we want a peaceful resolution of this thing, and I think at the end of the day, that's really what the neighbors want as well, okay? So I hope that moving forward, we can, we can come to some sort of an agreement where everybody, it's a win-win for everybody. But I just wanted to make sure that you knew that people appreciate what you do, and sometimes when emotion gets involved, people say things that they don't mean, that they wish they could take back, but I can, I can tell you from my conversations, no one has questioned your counseling center and what you do for a living, so that's it.
Okay. Just so I'm clear, moving forward, would you all like me to make contact with him?
I would like for somebody, either you or Laura, reach out to them and see if they will meet with you. They may not meet with you, but offer to sit down and talk and see if you can come to some type of resolution. That way we know that at least someone has tried.
I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
Would you like to report back on that, or how?
If he reaches a resolution, yes, please.
Or just that there's contact been made, that we're meeting on a certain time or date?
Sure, we'd love to.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas to everybody.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas. Okay, let's back.
Mayor?
Yes? Sure?
So Dave Andrews, WSPC, and I kind of got called out in a public meeting here. I just wanted to say, I did call them well before I did the story. She called me back three to five days later. We talked extensively, and this is exactly what I told her to do, is show up at a public meeting where it can go public. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move back to announced delegations. Presentation of the fiscal year 1819 city audit. Colleen, if you'll pass those around.
And I do want to apologize to council for not having this loaded, and apologize to Cassie as well.
All right. We understand.
My name is Cassie Wilson with Martin Starnes and Associates, and it's my understanding And it's my understanding that the prior auditors you had, I don't believe, actually gave you a PowerPoint presentation. So, so when I presented it to Colleen, that was something that was unfamiliar to her, but it's something that our firm offers. So, new auditors, new way of things, so. Alright. Looks like they got it loaded here on the screen too, so that the public can follow along as well. So, I'll just go over some of the highlights from this year's audit. The audit has been completed. It has been submitted to the LGC, the Local Government Commission. We are waiting on approval from them, but they are pretty busy this time of the year reviewing audits. So, yours should be up hopefully soon and we will hear back from them. But we did check in with them and it is on their upcoming list of things to do. But with the holidays too, you know, it could be a few more days before they, they get back to us on that. But it has been submitted to them. And we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. And so, that is a clean opinion, that's the highest quality opinion that we can give you. And just so that you know, as you're going through your financial statements, once you get that final bound copy, I believe you have an electronic copy right now that you can go through. But you will notice within the financial statements, something a little different from last year is with the implementation of GASB 88. And all of that is, is just language changes this year. So, no restatement, like the last three years we've seen with your ledgers and OPEB and Leo and all the other changes that have come over the last few years. This is just a language change. And so, it was more disclosures about debt, what's secured property for the debt and, and just, just additional information that the government standards board wanted to have disclosed. And so, that was what GASB 88 did. The general fund summary on this next slide is the expenditures and the revenues in comparison from 2018 to 2019. So, you will notice that for 2019, there was an increase in total revenue about 2.2 million and an increase in total expenditures about 1.4 million. And then, we'll talk more about those in detail. On the next slide, you have your general fund, total fund balance, and you will see that you had an increase. So, your total general fund fund balance ended at 7,244,667. So, an increase of $671,871. Now, what the LGC looks at for each unit is the available fund balance and the percentage calculation for that as well. So, this is your available fund balance for 2019 and this is the calculation as followed by the LGC. So, it ended at $5,419,734. So, you had an increase of 503,380. That's always a positive reflection of the city for the, the LGC to see that you had an increase in that available fund balance. So, as your fund balance increased, your expenditures didn't increase negatively against that. The percentage that they look at when they are comparing units of similar size to one another and where they're at with their fund balance is the percentage as comparison to the general fund expenditures. And so, you ended about the same as last year, just a slight increase there. So, it ended at 32.65%. Something that we want to always look at and remember when it comes to the general fund is there's multiple classifications for the fund balance. And so, you have listed on this screen what you're restricted. Your non-spendable, which would be prepaid your inventory, and then your assigned amount. And then, you have a total unassigned fund balance listed there as well, and that totals up to your total fund balance. So, once you take out all the other restrictions, you didn't have any committed. But once you take out all your other restrictions, your unassigned is $4,760,370. Now, looking at just the revenues for the general fund, you'll see percentages here of the main categories. So, you'll see that your unrestricted intergovernmental, 36%. Property taxes being your highest at 43%. Sales and services is 10%. And then, other revenues total 11% of the general fund revenues. And so, this does not include the transfers or debt proceeds that the general fund may have had for the year. And you'll notice, I tried to, to list out there also what the actual totals were for your property tax unrestricted and sales and services is also listed there, what those actual values are. And those percentages were very comparable to 2018 when I looked at them. Now, looking at the expenditures with the general fund, you have public safety of 50%, public works of 21%, then general government 14%, and then other expenditures totaling 15%. And that does not include transfers out. Now, for your enterprise funds, this is a slide that includes the total of all your enterprise funds. And if you have any questions about the breakout of those individual funds, I will try to answer those for you. But just as a comparison from 2018 to 2019 in total, you'll see your totals for unrestricted net position, cash flow from operations, and then your change in net position, and that's at the full accrual gap statement level. And so, you will see that you had, for your unrestricted net position in total for all the enterprise funds, there was an increase.
Just for folks who may be watching this.
Yes.
May I, may I, may I?
Sure.
Just for the folks, not necessarily that are here, but the folks that will watch it tomorrow or whenever. If you will list out those four enterprise.
Yes.
Just not specific as to how much.
Okay.
But what they are for the public.
Yes. So, this includes the water and sewer fund, your electric fund, the landfill fund, and then the Department of Public Housing Fund. So, that's, that's all four of those.
And I just, sometimes folks that watch it want to know, well.
What does that mean? Yes, yeah.
Because they don't realize that we, that we have those, those opportunities.
Absolutely.
Or responsibilities.
Yes, those responsibilities. Opportunities for them.
We have a total of 8,800,000 and so forth that's totally in reserve.
That's what is considered unrestricted for those enterprise funds in total. So, the other part of that is going to be what's restricted, that's invested in capital assets for, for those funds. So, this.
Be restricted and unrestricted at the same time.
Well, no, so that's the only, that's the, this is just the unrestricted that's, that is listed here. But you have additional fund balance, that's just what's invested in your capital assets. So, this is just your portion listed here that's unrestricted. Not necessarily cash, because you have a different cash balance at 63019, because you would have other liabilities that each fund is responsible for. So, cash is, is a different matter on your balance sheet for each of those funds.
Usable money.
Usable reserves, basically. Is that how you would define that to them? Yes.
I had trouble going through, I went through as much of this I could. I had trouble with that because I'd see unrestricted, but then I'd see something that was restricted. And those two just don't, just don't add up to me. And I, I, I guess they'll tell you for four years, I've tried to find out what our cash reserves are. Where do I find that?
So, if you will look actually in the financial statements and in, even the MDNA is probably going to be the, the simplified version for you to follow as far as what you're.
The simplified.
Yes. So, the MDNA is a summary of everything else that's in that report that we compiled together. And so, that just gives you a general idea of what the changes were, what the balances were. And you'll see what your cash and cash equivalents balances were for your enterprise funds in total. But if you want to see those in individual funds, you'll have to dig a little deeper into the, the back statements. But Colleen can walk you through that. But if you have any questions at all as you go through it, you can contact me directly. I believe most of you have our email at the firm. You can call, you can email, you can reach out to Colleen and I'll be happy to set up and answer any questions that you want to defer to me or if you want to ask her anything, that would be fine as well.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
When, when most people typically refer to the fund balance, are they referring to the unrestricted general fund balance? Are they referring to the total general fund fund balance? Or the, because, for example, the fund balance at the end of the year was in the unrestricted general fund was 4.7 million, I think, which is just under 31%. But the, I jotted it, hang on, but I lost it. The total for the general fund, I think, was like 7 point some million. It was up toward 40 some percent, I think. So, typically, what do people refer to when they say our fund balance? I know there's a bunch of them in the different funds. But what I refer to is the unrestricted general fund. I could say ours is 31%.
Okay.
Which.
Yes, so, when we look at what the LGC does, the only part that they're taking out, that they're looking at when they look at your fund balance, and that's why it has the word available in front of it, because it is what is available. But it doesn't take into account, so on the, this slide that I pulled up, but I don't know if your screens changed or not as well. But on this slide that I pulled up that was about the breakdown, it will actually only take out what's non-spendable in the stabilization by state statute that's required. It doesn't take into account all your other restrictions, your committed, what you've assigned. So, it doesn't take all those other pieces into account. But most people, when they talk about fund balance, it's fund balance in total. And that's why we have this slide in here to remind not just you, because I'm sure Colleen tells you this at every single meeting and you see it on all the documents from her. But just to remind the public as well is that although you have a, a healthy fund balance, 7.2 million there, of that fund balance, you have amounts that are restricted either by law or by the purpose that it was given. Your non-spendable, because, you know, you can't spend inventory, you can't, you really count that in your fund balance. So, inventories and prepaid's come out. And then, you've already assigned amounts for projects because that's what that money came in for. You may have debt that, that comes in and, and it's committed for that. So, there are other classifications that have to be considered. When you say fund balance and you don't say unassigned, then you're meaning your total fund balance. If you say what's unassigned, then that takes out all the other restrictions, whether formal or state or any other restrictions. And so, that's what brings you down to your reserves. Your unassigned fund balance is at 4.7 million. Any other questions or comments?
For a municipality of our size, how would you, looking at this report, the fund balance detailed general fund, is there any way to gauge how we would, in, in relationship to other municipalities? Is this a pretty good amount, or is it?
Um, the only answer that I can really give for that, because my hands are, my hands are kind of tied as to how I can answer that. But, I mean, you have, really, when you, when we look at that, we're looking at this available fund balance percentage of your general fund expenditures for the year. And that is 32.65 and that's a good percentage for you to have. So, for your size, that's, you know, acceptable because you're above what the LGC requires, what their minimum is.
What would be there, what do they require of us?
Um, so. What's that?
Is that the 1,007, is that what they require of us?
Um, that's just the stabilization by state statute amount. So, I believe what the LGC, do you remember that percentage? 8%, yeah. 8% is your minimum. So, since you're above that threshold, and so, that would be a lot lower. So, other units may, within your population group, may not offer all the enterprise services and all the departments that you have in your general fund. So, I can't really say comparing you to other units of your population group. So, it's really one of those things that the LGC has detailed information through, I don't know if you're aware of the additional form that gets submitted annually. It's referred to as the AFIR. And the LGC compiles all that together for all the units in North Carolina. And you can go and look in your population group and compare your expenditures even by function, by general government, by public safety. And you can compare that county, state. You can compare it at all levels and kind of see where you fall within your population group. But then, you just have to keep in mind that they may not have, you know, some of the, the services that you offer. They may not have some of the, you know, culture and recreation things that you offer. And so, your fund balance may be affected by that, or they may offer more things than you do. So, just keep that in mind when you look at it.
Thank you.
Further questions? Thank you very much for coming tonight and taking the time to explain this to us.
Yes, absolutely. And thank you so much to your, your staff and everybody that worked so hard pulling the audit together and getting the financial statements drafted, meeting our, our timelines that we wanted to meet. You have, Colleen and Jake are terrific to work with and I really appreciate everything that they did to, to make things move as smoothly as possible.
Thank you. And council, I think we should echo that to our staff because we had a very, what I consider aggressive year in trying to prepare ourselves for FIFR. And we spent some money that we normally would not spend. And staff did an excellent job of maintaining the budget and actually increased our fund balance. Where we could have definitely used quite a bit of it. They did an excellent job doing that, so we need to say thank you to our staff. Not letting you see it.
Moving on to number six, administrative reports. The monthly departmental reports are in your agenda. Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. They want to have anything they want to take off or move it off, move all at one time to approve it?
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Townsend to approve the consent agenda. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Under unfinished business, consider appointments to the city boards and commissions. You got some more applications tonight. How does council wish to proceed?
I'd like to just put this off again. I don't think we got enough yet.
That, plus you need to look at the ones you've got and make sure you understand who they are.
That's, even looking at the ones that have served, I don't think we're ready to just jump into that.
Have a motion by Councilmember Framlett to delay this to next meeting.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Louder, further discussion?
Are we going to get attendance records, I think?
They were in your agenda tonight.
They're in here.
Further questions?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Moving to number 12, discuss the name for the new street. If you remember, we changed Bonard Street or Bonard Avenue, whatever it was, Bonard Road, I believe it was, to Hillco Street. And that, we had originally talked about when the DOT builds the new connection off of Hillco, the road that goes into Urai Trail and hopefully will at one day extend all over to the reserve, would be named Bonard. Staff is asking us, is that what we want to do? Or do we want to consider a new name, maybe for not having any potential conflicts in the future? I will say, council needs to, needs to also know how that originated. If you remember, that development was built by Bernard Poplin many years ago and the road was named after him. So, you may or may not want to talk to that family before you move forward.
Is there any reason not to name it Bonard and just keep it like it is?
Well, Kevin thought that maybe it could be a conflict later on in the naming from trying to distinguish between the old and the new.
The old, alright.
It, it's gone now.
Right. So, so for, for, for reference, like East Alamo, Texaco?
They are now Hillco Street.
Okay.
And they knew that because they were in agreement to it.
Okay, so, but what we're talking about tonight is not going to disrupt anybody's business address?
Currently, no, but we do need to get an address, a road name in the very near future for the Urai Trail Apartments, because they're going to need to know what their address is going to be.
Urai Trail.
Urai Trail.
Urai Trail.
Well, but there's, there's some history there though. May I?
Yes, please, this is a discussion.
There's some history there, even though Bonard was short. I mean, it really was not short-lived, but it was a short street. It's probably been there, I don't know, it's been there as long as I can remember. So, do we, I mean, I think we have to keep it. And, I mean, that would be my thinking, is that it's been.
If we do anything, I, I mean, it's just a suggestion, what about we do Bernard Poplin Drive?
Mr. Bieber?
The white hat lane was originally developed by Mr. Poplin's client line and it was built by Black Ink. These two are Paul, Paulie Paul. They were literally predated by Chief Holland, Steve Warren Coe. And that was originally developed.
Black Ink.
They named it after him. And, and, and Mr. Poplin, he, he ran along. He was a veteran, but he actually, he actually managed.
Thanks for the history lesson there.
Does this new part run into an exist, will it run into an existing road?
Right now, no. It will go, it will go up past the entrance to, to Urai Trail. And then, there'll be a gap. It will go, it will go up past the entrance to Urai Trail, and then there'll be a gap probably several hundred feet before it turns into the road that comes in for the reserve at the other end.
But that's been named.
No, that has not been named.
That one has not been. So does that need to be coordinated with...
Rename it. What did you say about renaming it? Why we needed rename it?
It doesn't have a name now.
We don't have any name right now, so we have to have a name.
It's a new road. But does that need to be coordinated with the new road coming in from the other end?
Kevin, do you think both ends should be named the same?
I mean, is it going to come in and stop, you know, meet and change names?
Right now, the section is that the reserve is just called Road A. It's not actually dedicated right of way or anything like that. We will have it, it's not going to be a street per se at this time. There's no address for it, so it doesn't have to have a name. But the section down there at the reserve, it will be, at the reserve, the Urai Trail will be addressed off of it, so it does need to have a name come off that street. And that, that name would probably dictate whatever the northern portion of it becomes as well.
Well, I was wondering if there would be any kind of conflict naming this and not, you know, intending to do that the whole way through.
No, I think if you name this, it needs to be the same thing all the way through.
It'd be a shame if we, if this board thought wise to name a street after Barney, we just wipe it out. Because what he did is still there.
That's exactly.
I mean, the effort he put into it, and that justified naming a street after, that's still there.
Yeah. I mean, I understand that, and that's why staff wanted to ask, oh, we don't really have a problem with it, it's just that this is a, this is a completely new section of street that wasn't there before, and that's why, yeah.
I just, I just hate to wipe that off the record.
Maybe there's a way to do it and incorporate some of the old and make it so people recognize that it is a new road.
A new portion of that.
Correct. Not get rid of the old, but maybe add to it.
What about Bonard Trail?
What about if we use his first and last name?
Bonners.
It's just Bonard Poplin Trail, or Bonard Poplin Lane.
That's too long.
Yeah, the full names are starting to get kind of hard for public works to get on.
On the side, right.
Yeah, on the side, so.
The last name needs to be there. It is in every other street.
Well, the family, they didn't do it originally, so we're asking, you know, do you want to stay with what was there before, but it's just a whole new road, you don't have to tell us.
I don't have a problem continuing.
Why don't we, why don't we go speak to his children? And say, to his kids?
Are they here still?
Well, you know what they're going to say.
Well, but, no, 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 no. They may say, they may say, put trail on it, they may, because we really, I think, I hear council wanting to keep because of the impact that that was made in the planning and all that, the history there. They may, they may say, street, um...
We don't usually do that with...
Trail. Kids, off springs, when we name people.
Kevin?
Just a suggestion.
If council delays it, how's that going to affect Urai Trail? How quick do they need this named? I know Ellie kind of seemed like she would like for it to go pretty quick.
Well, I mean, we're not going to be able to do it, and we'll need an ordinance coming up at the next, at the next meeting anyway. So I think they're fine until then, until early January, but I wouldn't push it too much further than that. They do need an address for contractual reasons with banks and everything else, so.
But if we just use his first name and last name and drive or trail, that's going to be just, that's going to be the same length if we said Urai something Trail, or Urai something Lane.
So what are you proposing?
I'm just saying Bernard Poplin Drive.
Is that, is that, is that cover his name? I mean, is that...
As long as we keep Bonard in there, I'm all right.
Is that too long?
I'll put that in for the motion.
Second, for matter of discussion.
Have a motion by Councilmember Aldridge, and a second by Councilmember Hall to name it Bonard Poplin Trail. Drive.
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 We don't have to do public hearings, do we?
We'll, this, all we're doing is telling, bringing ordinance to us at the next, at a January meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. Well, we'll get the ordinance ready for y'all for January.
And if council doesn't like that, that meeting, you can change it. I mean, if you talk to the family sometime in between now and then, you want to change it, you're welcome to do it.
At least recognize us.
Further discussion?
Yeah, we can keep the ordinance flexible, we can just write it in on there or something if we have to.
All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Kevin, if you'll bring us something at the first meeting in January. Number 13, Monroe Corporate Center Visit. We had talked about going to the Monroe Corporate Center, and council asked it, we delay this to after Christmas. The proposed date is Wednesday, January the 22nd. Leave at 12:30 and return around 5:00.
Where is that? Repeat that.
Wednesday, January 22nd. We leave here about 12:30 and return around 5:00.
To go where? To go Monroe, to the corporate center where the airport is in Monroe.
It's too far out for me, but I'll meet you there. I mean, I'll meet you there.
Uh, we hadn't talked about that, and we were trying to get this one first.
Okay.
This is, everybody good?
Yep.
It looks like everybody's good, Mr. Ferris.
Thank you.
So we'll schedule it for that date. Number 14, consider attendance at the Martin Luther King Unity Prayer Braxis for Saturday, January 18th. Okay?
I won't be, I'll be out of town.
I'm not sure.
Looks like, Mr. Whitley, I had to let you know, Ms. Hall was going to be out of town.
I'll try to decide next week.
Coming around the table, Mr. Ferris?
I don't believe I have anything to add.
Mr. Townsend?
No comments.
Ms. Hughes?
No comment.
Mr. Aldridge?
No comment.
Ms. Hall?
Hey, great event on Saturday, and the rain at least held off till the sprinkles started nearly at the end. Don't know if you all saw, and Toby, before you leave, I want to thank you, thank you and Dave both for what you did in getting the word out for the parade. Thanks for the articles you've written about the grand marshals, and I don't know if you've seen a picture or not of the float, but we have, is Chief Doolan, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm looking right at you. Chief Doolan here. We have, we had a special guest join our kids on the float, and that's one of our own police officers, who I really want now to go follow through, and if you'll follow through, he is, ah, help me, Tim, Tim Peck. And Tim's mother is Sandy, who runs Second Street Sundry's. It became apparent to me last weekend talking to Sandy that Tim is, I don't know, is he mid-30s probably, David? Probably mid-30s, he is a pediatric cancer survivor. And he was as elated, as were the children on the float, to see each other. Seeing him, I think, gave them hope, seeing, seeing him gave them hope, seeing them gave him just a re, I mean, it was, it was so bright, it was just enlightening and very bright to see Tim spend some time with our pediatric cancer warriors that were there. So what a wonderful event that was in that morning. I just appreciate all the different folks gave of their time and energy to really make the event nice for them, so, and I so appreciate that. So, thanks. Thank you, Toby.
Thank you. Mr. Whitley?
Just tack on to that, this town can put on some good things. We had the tour of homes, I think, since we met last time, which I thought was probably the best one I've been on, and years ago, but it was really good. And the parade, I thought, was tremendously successful. So anyone involved in those things, you know, good job. We can put on some successful events here. So I hope everybody has a Merry Christmas.
Mr. Framlett?
Just to add something to what he said, the tour of homes, I commend Kevin Robinson for an absolutely gorgeous home that he has redone on PD Avenue. And with those first two houses there, the 1899 Bed and Breakfast and his home, looks tremendous. Kevin did a super job with that.
Ms. Louder?
Merry Christmas.
Anyone in the audience have anything to come before council? I'll say the same thing as all the rest of council members, Merry Christmas to all the city and especially our staff. Thank you very much for all you do. I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A, 4, 5, and 6, for real estate, personnel, and economic development. Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Louder, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.